So, good morning. Beautiful, sunny, somewhat smoky Monday morning, but we will call our regular meeting of City Council for August 20th to order. We are going to start with new and council business, and you'll see that there's just a quick note here for 102-1, Counselor Malkinson, and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good morning, your worship. I am not completely sure how to go about this, but I think it is necessary to commend and recognize the Oilmen's Association and other contributors for their work building that bridge in Kin Park. And I think the thing to do, well, the thing that would be most appropriate so that the Oilmen's Association is on board and agrees with any ceremonies that we decide to hold with them there, that it would be necessary for council to agree in principle to maybe, I don't know, a recognition ceremony, or, you know, well, I want to ask for a resolution about, you know, council's intentions.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want council to say that they're in favor of this so that we can get organized with the Oilmen's Association.
Well, I think, if I can help you out then, I think it's a great idea. I mean, as you've mentioned, the Oilmen have done a great service to the community, as they always do, but this one here specifically around the bridge, and it would be, I think, very appropriate to do that. One thing, I guess, proper process that we could follow if you want would be to make a motion that possibly myself contact the Oilmen, the president of the Oilmen, and say that council wants to publicly thank them, and that we'd hope that we could work with them to do an official ribbon-cutting slash community barbecue at that event. And then, if that works, I can contact them, and then we can find a mutual date, if that's council's direction. Would you like to make that?
I, yeah. Would you like me to repeat it?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Wilbur. And any discussion from council? Yes. Thanks Duncan.
Oh, shucks.
Yeah, okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And it's carried. Yeah, so Counselor Malkinson, is there anything else then that you had while you were at the floor?
I'll steal the most obvious one, your worship, that might detract from all the other counselors. I'd like to congratulate Connie Patterson, the Exhibition Association, and all the volunteers and everyone involved in a spectacular 90th anniversary of the Fall Fair this year. I think they did a very good job. It was a well-attended event, and, yeah, just props to them. Maybe we ought to send a letter congratulating them. I don't know if we regularly do or not, but...
Good. Oh, we do, we do thank yous, and we can definitely send something off.
Sure.
Yes, and thank you to you for helping out and volunteering as well.
And the other counselors, your worship. I think Ms. Schuman did, and I think Terry was asked, but delegated up to me.
Oh, it's, it's good. Thank you. Is there anything else in your council business? Counselor Parslow, you said you had something?
Yes, just at the Mile Zero Park.
Okay.
Society meeting, meeting on August 20th. The society there has $144,000 or so in the bank. The occupancy at the RV park has been about 62 percent. The area C of the campground, which is that part just immediately south of the showers and the laundry stuff, is being brought up to full service this September at a cost of $15,000. And the payback from the increased revenue will be in two years, so that would have paid for itself in two years. The barn and the stage area has been stained. There was an issue with the teeter-totter at the Rotary Lake. The teeter-totter's been removed, and city staff are on top of all that and are working with, with the society around possible replacement and safety standards. There's going to be a new facility for the village, a service station, and the plans have been approved, and that will proceed to building permit application and so on this year. And if everything goes well, construction will begin next year. The concrete floor issue, which has been somewhat longstanding, has been finally resolved, and a concrete floor has, is in the process of being poured into the maintenance facility so that carriages and a couple of old vehicles can be put in there. So that, the meeting was very positive, and a lot of, a lot of things were accomplished at that meeting. Certainly, that's an update on the Mile Zero.
Good, thank you. Counselor McFadden?
Good morning, your worship. This evening at 7 o'clock, as I understand it, is the AGM for the Chamber of Commerce at the NCAN Event Center, and I think it's open to the public, but I think I saw the director of the chamber here.
Yeah, calm down.
Is it still on for tonight? Open to the public?
You guys.
Thank you very much. And at some point in today's proceedings, I would like to get an update on the situation of the water and the weir at the Kiskatna from someone, whenever, at some point during the meeting. Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Schuman?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Gosh, it's been a busy month since our last meeting. It seems like without our two meetings a month, you accumulate a few things. So I attended the watershed research forum at the Northern Lights College, and found that to be very interesting, all of the different researchers from UMBC that have been out in our watershed studying it, had all sorts of interesting things to tell us about the state of our watershed, and I'm looking forward to seeing what more will come of that. I also participated with the watershed steward and staff up at the concert, at the office. They did a conservation, a water conservation clinic and invited the public to attend, and there was a good handful of people up there learning about all the things we can do for water conservation. Of course, the Fall Fair was high on my priority over the last weeks, and I want to congratulate everyone on a fabulous event, and I just wanted to say that the roof at the grandstand was awesome. I mean, I didn't even get so much as a little bit of a sunburn, so it was, it was awesome. And of course, congratulations to Connie on receiving the Diamond Jubilee Award. Very well deserved. On Saturday, Counselor Malkinson and I participated in a neat event, a Northern Environmental Action Team event down at Rotary Lake, and they were handing out information about water conservation, and we put on a free barbecue and literally gave away hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hamburgers and hot dogs from 11 until 4 type of thing, so it was a very successful event. And that's, that's about all. Couple of BC Hydro meetings, but everybody else was in those also, so, thanks.
Good, thanks. Counselor Wilbur?
Counselor Schuman had touched on the watershed, but I did attend that as well. It was very informative and fortunate for me, I was able to meet some old family friends that were up here studying our watershed, so that was nice. I played hostess with my granddaughter at Rawlins 100th Art Show, so we had a lot of fun out there. So again, great group of volunteers, and Janet Loyzell and her team did a wonderful job. Military convoy, that was fun to see all the vehicles come through. Interesting little bit of trivia I found out afterwards is my mother-in-law's Uncle Stanley, which would be Stanley Darlington, was actually the official commanding officer that handed the highway over to the United States. So that was kind of an interesting little tidbit I found out this week. As well, we had the bikers, Bikes for Bibles, come through town. Unfortunately, with the storm, they were unable to bike to Dawson, but they did get to spend the day seeing our great community and meeting different people and partaking in all we had to offer. So wonderful group of people. I did present them with some postcards and Mile Zero pins, which they were very happy to receive, so those were kind of the things that I did over the last month.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for all those updates. So we'll move along then to 3, the minutes. We have 3-1, which are the minutes from the public hearing of July 23rd and the regular meeting of July 23rd for adoption. Counselor McFadden and Counselor Malkinson? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. And any business arising from that? No, so seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence, which is 5-1. First is Letter of South Peace Community Resources Society, looking for a permissive exemption for their taxes. I see people glaring. Counselor Malkinson?
I move we receive this letter for information, your worship.
For information?
Yeah.
Okay. Seconded by?
No one?
Anyone want to second that? Okay.
Can we talk about this later?
Sure, well, receive for information if you want. We can discuss it. You can always vote it down if you want something different, but if I can help, I mean, one of the things I think that, before it's seconded then, is this doesn't really follow, fall into our present policy, so my comments would be that maybe we should make a recommendation, refer us back to staff or report to find out whether or not we should be doing this.
Sure, sure. I would, I'd like that to be part of the motion as well.
Shelley, did you want to comment to that before I s-
Yes, so through you worship, basically, the request goes in with all the permissive tax exemptions, and it's brought to council in October for first three readings, so that's when all the backup information and all the other exemptions are, come forward in one.
Okay, so if we refer it back to staff, it'll come back at that time? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's basically already gone into the queue.
Okay. But just to make it tidier, we'll do that then, so Counselor Malkinson doing that, and seconded by Counselor Schuman. Any questions then? Counselor Malkinson?
I, I tried to contact this gentleman. I couldn't get ahold of him, though. I, I'm not sure how South Peace, well, Spikers receives, well, where exactly Spikers receives its funding from. It's largely the provincial government, isn't it?
Provincial government funding, yeah.
So we're basically giving, well, yeah, you can draw that. You know what I'm thinking about.
Yes, yeah, so we'll, if we refer it back to staff, then it'll come by with the other ones on whether it fits policy or not. Okay. Any other questions? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And 5-2 is the letter from BC Transit, and this is the annual performance summary.
Move to be received.
Counselor Parslow, seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any questions or discussion or not? Maybe one comment I'll just make quickly is that, you know, I mean, it's great to have this information in front of us. It shows basically on a financial side what it costs to run BC Transit, and I think more importantly, that I noticed there as well, is that we don't really see many, much change here. This is about year to year, about the same. I mean, there's a few fluctuations, but it's a costly service somewhat, but it's one that's in high demand for the people who use it. Counselor McFadden?
That's correct, your worship.
Counselor Schuman?
Do, have we received this before, or is this a direct result of our consultation with sort of that review? Like, I don't recall seeing this.
Yeah, we receive this every year at year end. Jim, did you want to?
Now, through you worship, we receive this exact report often a little bit later than this, but sometime in the fall every year we receive this.
Anyways, it was very interesting.
Okay. It is. So it's for information, no other comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. It's not quite 9 o'clock, so we're going to move past delegations at this time into reports. First report is 7-1, and this is Report 12-180 from the Chief Administrative Officer, and this is for the letter to Mr. Ian Eggersen. Counselor Schuman?
I move that we send this letter as written by staff to Spikers.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor McFadden. Jim?
Through you worship, there's one update since the report was prepared. We have verified that there is no agreement to allow the use of the lane. We have contacted Cal Tire, and they will be moving their various storage items out of the lane.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for that follow-up. So no other changes into the memo? So, all those in favor then? Oh, sorry, prior to that?
We, was Mr., Mr. Schute was saying we should include that in the response? Is that right?
Correct. The updated information should be in the response to Ms. Schuman.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thanks.
So moved.
Be included with that, okay? So all those in favor then? Opposed? And it's carried. 7-2 is Report 12-189 from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is the Policy Review Work Plan. Counselor Malkinson?
I move that we approve this policy work plan, or maybe I ought to read the recommendation. Yeah, that we approve the meeting schedule and the work plan, and, your worship, I would also like to, I have my list of policies here that I would like to maybe submit. They're a little late. What do you think?
A little late.
Well, it's, to your, yeah, if you want to add them, I mean, we'll, obviously, that would be a little, we'll have to get council to amend this because the, we tried to have them all in two weeks ago so staff could have this, but-
I apologize.
Yeah, but if we give that off to Tyra, you can add, just add this on to the recommendation?
Yeah, the intention was to consider each policy requested to be reconsidered or discussed individually anyway, so it won't be automatically reconsidered, it'll be added to the list. If council as a whole decides to reconsider it at that time, it'll be added, it'll be added at the same time as the other ones that were proposed by council that were decided at that period.
Okay, and those are all separate ones that aren't on the list right now, though?
Yeah, I was just about to say, the majority of the ones that I identified were redundant, and all the ones that weren't redundant were mainly ones that I wanted clarification on. I wanted some background into them, so it's, it's really not a big request.
Okay, so maybe the recommendation, the motion will be the recommendation as listed plus the additions from council?
Is that a, I apologize, I shouldn't have been.
Okay. Any other, oh, sorry, I guess I need a seconder for that? Counselor Schuman?
Yeah.
And any comments then? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, just, this is, I really commend Brenda for getting this organized. It's obvious that there's a great need to look at this policy manual, given all the stuff from staff and, and other matters. I'm just wondering, maybe this is a question through you to the CAO here. Are council members expected to just share their concerns and issues, or actually to do some of the, make some suggestions as it relates to wording amendments to the policy? Or will staff be actually crafting the, the language for the policy based upon input at these meetings?
Through you worship, these are all regular meetings, at which time council can make and pass resolutions, so our expectation is if you desire to change in the policy, either as to intent or as to wishing different wordings that were clearer, you would make it at that time. You'd direct staff to bring one back for your subsequent approval.
Okay. If I can on that, though, I mean, that would be my thought, that council's not going to be the ones writing policy or wordsmithing, but that we have some, we identify that maybe some changes would be needed to be made, and then direct staff to make those changes, and then approve it once it comes forward.
One last comment, is I think we may well find that we'll need additional meetings, given the amount of work here.
It's quite possible, and as you can see, we already have to block out a lot of time then. Okay, so, any other comments? So the recommendation as listed with the addition of Counselor Malkinson's then? So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 7-3 is Report 12-181 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, and this is for variance permit for Stephen Reynolds at 1341 93rd Avenue. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move the, the Report Number 12-181 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, redevelopment variance permit application Number 12-07 for Stephen Reynolds, KTS Truck Repair, at 1341 93rd Avenue be received. Further, that council approve issuance of development variance permit Number 12-07, which reduces the rear setback of the accessory building from .6 meters to .34 meters, and reduces the external side setback of the accessory building from 3 meters to .99 meters.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 7-4, and actually, I need to apologize, Counselor Parslow, I should have talked to you about this earlier. As acting mayor, I need you to come and take the chair on 7-4 because I, as this is my neighbor, I should declare conflict. So if you don't mind, maybe just doing 7-4?
Have you got on your screen that? So item 7.4, do we have a motion for, to deal with this? Counselor Wilbur?
I make motion that Report Number 12-183 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding development variance permit Number 12-08 from Dennis Kiskertky, Skasterkki? Sorry if I pronounced that wrong. Requesting the minimum rear setback for the principal building be reduced from 7.5 meters to 6.8 meters at 101 89th Avenue be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the notification process for development variance permit Number 12-08.
Seconded by Counselor McFadden. Any comments, questions?
I just, it seems that we, I mean, I understand why, but it seems we keep having these variance permits coming forward, and I'm just wondering which part of when you apply for a permit, these are the regulations, and we build it anyways, and then we come to council, and we vary it for them. I'm wondering, should we just be varying our setback period on property, or how we deal with this? So I just wanted to put that out there because it really triggers my lights when it's, you build it and then come and see if it's okay. I think you should be asking if it's okay first.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it is more common than it ought to be that we have these development variance permit applications. The setbacks that are in your zoning and OCP bylaw are constructed around safety issues, fire protection mainly, so I wouldn't advise changing them. What the Act says is that you have the ability to look at each situation case by case to see if those safety considerations can be met and still allow the variance. If you decide no, then the individual has to take out the foundation they've poured or the building that they've constructed if they come after the fact. So they're taking a great risk not getting it right the first time. In this particular situation, staff doesn't see any pressing safety issue around the development variance. However, there is a notification process required to the public, and it's possible that one of the neighbors will feel differently about that. So you're not actually granting it now, you're, you're putting it for consultation, and if there are objections raised, it will come back to you. This particular builder is a frequent flyer, and this will be the third time you've done that for this particular builder. Some folks use a legal surveyor to lay out their foundations, and some people eyeball it in or measure it in from another fence, and then a legal surveyor comes for mortgage purposes to verify, and it turns out that the eyeballing hasn't been particularly expert, which is what I assume is the case here.
Through Counselor Schuman, did you?
No, my question is answered, thank you.
Counselor McFadden?
Well, I quite agree with Mr. Chair, with Counselor Wilbur, but when a developer or a builder comes in to get their permit, and they present their drawings and their plans to city staff, wouldn't they, would it not be apparent then that they're infringing upon the setbacks?
Is there a question to-
There's a question to staff, yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the, the drawings are fine. It's the placement actually on the ground that is the issue, it's not placed or the drawings.
Thank you. No, I just, I quite agree that this seems to happen. It's almost, it's becoming too routine in my mind.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Carried. I'll just retrieve the mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. So now we're on 7-5, which is Report 12-182, and this is for the development variance permit for Charles Potrats. Counselor Schuman?
So I move the recommendation that Report Number 12-182 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding development permit 12-15 for Charles Potrats be received, and further that staff be authorized to issue development permit 12-15 to Charles Potrats for the development of a 1,200 square foot shop at 705 100A Avenue upon receipt of the required financial security in the amount of $7,500.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Can we please do our very best that this will not have a variance to favor on it? Please.
I don't think he's started billing, so it's not an after-the-fact thing.
Yeah, exactly. Should note, too, we did get the one response. Most of the comments that are in that response, albeit as across the street, but not quite relevant in the fact that the property across from him is actually zoned commercial, it's not zoned residential. If it was zoned residential, then this obviously wouldn't probably be in front of us because it wouldn't be allowed, but because it's zoned commercial, that's why it is allowed. I just wanted to stress that. Okay, Noah, did you have a comment, Counselor?
We'd have a tough time explaining this one if we declined it, you know, because it is actually zoned commercially rather than residential.
Exactly, so, okay, so, all those in favor? And opposed? It's carried. 7-6 is Report 12-184, and this is for a raw water hookup for Frank and Shelley Garcia. Counselor Wilbur?
That Report Number 12-184 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding raw water hookup request by Frank and Shelley Garcia be received. Further, that council approve the raw water hookup application from Frank and Shelley Garcia for Lot D Plan 17173, Section 14, Township 78, Range 17, west of the Sixth Meridian.
Seconded by Counselor Schuman. And any questions or comments? Counselor Malkinson?
I have two questions, your worship. I'm wondering how much water this is actually, that's actually being requested here. I know that the agreement isn't drawn up or anything. Is it just the size of the line that?
It's the size of the line, as for, I mean, it is metered, so as for water, it's no different than a house in town in the sense that you can use as much or as little as you want.
Yeah, I guess. And it's just for their farm usage, and this process will be complete by the time, well, by the time it's likely we're back at Stage 2A. It takes a while for these things to go through.
I wish I had the crystal ball. But Jim?
Through you worship, if it's okay by council today in response to the resolution that's on the floor, the next step is that the homeowner, property owner, sorry, enters the legal agreement with us that defines the uses that are appropriate and acknowledges that it's non-potable water. Once that agreement is signed, then they are authorized to hire a contractor to put a line in. We have several of these that are authorized where no service has ever been put in, so we don't know the timeframe on which the owner will put the service in. There's certainly time remaining in this year for them to put a service in and start using the service.
Okay, and along that raw water line, it's quite common, almost every single person is hooked onto it. When I was quickly looking at it, Jim, I think there's very few places presently left that might have the ability to tie in if they so choose, so it's not like we have an influx maybe that would come forward at this time.
Through you worship, absent subdivision, I don't believe there's any that could come forward.
Yeah, this is probably the last one, so I just thought I'd put that in there in case there was concerns.
That comforts me, your worship.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I'm here for. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No?
Maybe need to put a bishop's chair behind you.
On that, it is 9 o'clock, so let's move back to delegations. I believe we have former Counselor Powell, I was going to say Counselor Powell, in attendance. Good morning, Bud, how are you?
Good morning.
Good, so we're going to call Bud in, he's here with the Alaska Highway Community Society to give us an update, and we thought it was quite, quite fitting to have you come forward here, especially after the convoy just went up the Alaska Highway. It was a great opportunity and a reminder for council to see where we're at, and want to welcome you and thank you again for all your passion around this.
Well, thank you for the invitation to speak to you, and as usual, I brought April along for any tough questions. On behalf of Alaska Highway Community, I, of course, met with the minister from Yukon when he was here, I think Mike, you met him as well, very encouraged by his response to our project, and certainly he seemed well informed of what we're doing. what we're doing. I also had another meeting, which may not, or may be relative, met with the treaty for the NDP for tourism. That may have some future. I don't know, future, good move, anyway. Actually, the chance to come today is a very opportune, since we just received the finding report from Context Works, which we've been waiting for, because this report defined whether or not we should move forward. And I'm happy to say that the recommendation is that we do move forward. And that, of course, is key to the whole thing. And Context Works, Julie Harrison, who has very close connections in Ottawa, she's located in Ottawa, worked for Parks Canada for a lot of years, so that gives her some real credibility. And I must say that the report is exceptionally well done. And of course, as partial funders of the project, you will all receive a copy in due course. At the moment, we were just receiving the copies, and we need to present to the regional district, or at least that they get the report before it becomes out in the public. What the meeting proposed, you know, I started this project, and I thought, well, with the whole highway, it's going to be a national historic site. But when you look at the feasibility of that, to nominate a strip of asphalt 1,200 kilometers, or 1,200 miles long, whatever it was, it's just, it's not something that's possible. So what has been recommended by Parks Canada, and the people that Julie talked to, is that what we do is we nominate several, three or four specific things along the highway, such as Ksatner Bridge, other, the Khatat Munche Lake, and I feel the, there's a hangar in Watson Lake. Some of those things that we nominate as a historic, and then link the whole thing together with a thematic approach for the whole highway. By that, as other significant things sum up, perhaps by use of signboards and pullouts and so on, we can then showcase them to the world. That's basically what we're talking about. And that, when you think about it, makes a lot more sense. Our timeline is basically the same as it has been from day one. We start this fall with the meetings with the communities, which is key to the whole project, is meeting with communities, seeing what their thoughts are, how we should, what they have, which is heritage. And these will be done through Heritage BC. They will organize the workshops and supply the expertise to facilitate these workshops. Of course, First Nations is very, very much a part of this as well. And as you know, we've been working with First Nations on the Stories Crying Project, which is now, I think, been modeled up, April. And that was very successful, and certainly opened a lot of eyes as to the highway and what it did, both for the and bad for the First Nation people. the thing that really stands out since we tackled this is the amount of work that it is, and how daunting a task it is. This first report, of course, was such a key to moving forward, but this is really just the beginning. There's a lot of work to do, and thanks to April and her staff, hopefully we'll get through it all. There's so much in this report to touch upon that, as you know, the Yukon certainly has to be involved, and as I said, we met with the minister, they seem to be well onside. And of course, the Yukon is certainly ahead of us, you know, a lot of the things as far as the history of the highway. Also, even determining where, you know, the boundaries, like Hudson Hope, was very significant in the highway by supplying coal, the channel pipeline, all these things have, we have to define where we're going with this, and I think that, that is going to be, as I say, these workshops are going to be certainly very key to how we move forward. Our workshops are going to go on for, up to February 2013. Strategic plan will be developed in the spring of 2013. The nomination submission in September of 2013. Agenda paper preparation, fall of 2014 to spring of 2015. And prepare for commemoration, 2015 or summer of 2016, of course, shooting for 2017, which is, of course, the 75th anniversary of the highway. I don't know what else to really, to say about it, other than I still think it is absolutely imperative that we do this. The future of the highway is key to our region and key to the Northeast BC. I think the efforts put in by, by the people that are working on it, and also the support of the P3 regional district, this cannot be, you know, enough said for it. And I know the question about the Northern Rockies, they are somewhat, they are supportive, but financially, they have not come to the table. A lot of that, I believe, and I've been told by one of the counselors, is basically positioning, they don't want to do anything that puts money forward in the joint until they get some resolution on their fair share agreement. As you know, that's underway, and they're working on that. And it seems to me that, that really is the underlying reason that they haven't set forward now. Although I know April is going there, when you're on the 400, certainly, aren't you, in the fall to do a community tourism workshop? So at that time, I think we will see where the community stands on it. I mean, right now, we're hearing from the politicians, and, but where the community stands on it, and we know that we, meetings that we've had in 400, which communities, certainly they are very much behind it. Did I miss anything? Other than that, any questions? And you will, in due course, and we really haven't decided how these are going to be mailed out. As you know, your contribution to our society is also a financial one, and as such, you will certainly get a copy, but we wanted to make sure that the regional district was involved before we released them to everybody else. So hopefully, we can get that done in short order. We have to report to them in October, that's when we find, you know, report on the financial status and what we're doing. So the latest date will be October, but we may come up with some way of getting reports out sooner, because I would certainly like people to be familiar with this report when we have our workshop, because they certainly, it has to be in the workshop. So we will look after that. Any questions?
Well, first, I just want to say thank you very much, because, you know, without doing all of these efforts, the Alaska Highway will just become another road. And that's what we're trying to avoid, is to keep that historical significance, to keep that, the whole life of the Alaska Highway remembered, I guess, if nothing else, also for tourism, right? Which I know you're very passionate about. Who would have thought, Bud, that it's going to take 10 times longer to do this than actually to build the highway?
Just 10 times?
Well, maybe it's longer, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be, I don't know how many of you were, I know you were, Mike, at the military convoy I went to, and of course, it was one a few days before that. But talking to these people, the passion that they have, not only for this highway, of course, but for what they're doing, is amazing. And what great publicity that was for us, and how those, you know, what they do filters down, you ask your back here, I think, on the 30th?
49th.
Looking forward to possibly entertaining them once more.
Excellent. Yes, I actually was fortunate enough, myself and my family, to ride in the first leg with them. And I was, it was really neat listening to all of the stories from all the individuals, and when we stopped for the day, and just listening to their memories of the war days, and what they knew about the Alaska Highway, because understandably, most of them weren't around when it was built, but they were all either relatives of, or people involved with military, and were very supportive of it. And of course, we invited them for the 75th, we want to make sure they all come back for that, that would be great, so.
What vehicle did you ride in?
One of the first aid vehicles, which was, and I can't remember, it was a 42 Ford's three, sorry, three-ton, one of the original styles that was actually seen on the Alaska Highway. It was quite a...
Noisy?
What's that?
Noisy?
Very. Yes, we had earplugs, but the gentleman that I flew, or, sorry, that I drove with, was in the Vietnam War, he's a cardiologist who was paratrooper, and used to fly into areas where they needed his assistance, and so it was neat listening to his stories as well.
I know Muriel was talking to one of the wives, and she said that she and her husband wouldn't fight on the road, since they couldn't hear one another talk to each other. Hopefully, they would get back after two months still married.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Counselor Schuman?
I just have a comment. Thank you for being here today, providing us with an update. This is something that I find to be very important for us, and I grew up on the Alaska Highway. But I am looking forward to seeing this, this report and the recommendations, and hopefully, keep moving forward with it.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll be interested in attending our workshops when we, when we come to town. That's important, and many of you, if possible, attend, so you get your point forward and understand what we're trying to do.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work to preserve our history, and to keep us connected as a northern communities. That's very important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Bud, but before you, before you take off, I also want to say thank you. I mean, the amount of work and effort that you put in for this, for the community, for everything you've done, I'm very pleased and proud, actually, to be able to do this right now. One of the reasons why we called you in here today was, not only for the update, which we very much appreciate, but council unanimously put your name forward, and I want to read out that, "By command of Her Majesty the Queen, the Diamond Jubilee Medal is presented to you, Mr. Ronald Powell, in commemoration of the 60th anniversary of Her Majesty's accession to the throne, and recognition of your contributions to Canada." And I'd like to invite you to come forward on behalf of council and the community, and publicly thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And I'll let you close this, and council is very proud to put you in forward. And don't get Cheryl crying.
You already did.
Now I understand. My wife was so insistent to come to me. Yet, her going to bed at 7:00. Unbelievable. But I don't know how to thank you all. I mean, it's been a pleasure. I was sitting to my jury, sitting over there and listening to you, I had to leave, because every time it was a boat, I wanted to put my hands up. And I will never forget the 12 years I had in this council, and every one of them that I worked for, and also the staff who were so supportive to my efforts, and everybody, everybody that I've contracted over the last 12 years, as a little part of this, and appreciate very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Terry.
Didn't put you on the spot like nothing. As you could tell when I was reading, I was even nervous that one. And thanks, Muriel, for getting out of bed so early and coming on. I do not.
Terry has tissue.
Of course, Terry has the tissue. Thanks, Bud.
Thank you.
Actually, on that, let's take a three-minute recess. Looks like we need a break here for...
My phone is silent, yeah.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, everyone. I know it's a little hard pressed to get everybody to calm down after all that, but we will call the meeting to order. We're still on delegations, so we're at 6-2, and we have a delegation in attendance for proclamation. And I will read out the proclamation, and I'll invite you to come forward. "So whereas children are our most important resource, and it is our responsibility to care for, nurture, and protect them, and whereas statistics indicate that individuals with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder face the risk of mental challenges or learning disabilities, early school dropout, homelessness, addictiveness, trouble with the law, and mental illness, and whereas fetal alcohol spectrum disorder is preventable, and to reduce the incidence of fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, it is essential that pregnant women, their partners, and the community are provided the support they need and information. And whereas parents, professionals, individuals living with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, and other people around the world will observe the Ninth International Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day on September 9, 2012, with a minute of reflection at 9:09 a.m. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim September 9, 2012, as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day in Dawson Creek." And thank you for coming forward here. I'll have this to you, and thank you very much for coming in, and give you a few minutes if you want to.
Well, we're just a small representation of a much larger committee made up of various social services agencies in Dawson Creek, that include the school district and Northern Health. And we'd just like to thank the city for supporting us and bringing awareness to fetal alcohol spectrum.
And thank you, thank you for all you do as well, for bringing awareness. Is there any questions from the council or comments?
Thank you.
Will there be any specific events around, around the day of?
Not in Dawson Creek, not this year. We're just a committee running again, so we thought we would just start with the declaration this year, that there are special events planned throughout the province and home throughout the country.
And we will have a workshop on ASB as part of our Booty Learning Conference, October 12th and 13th.
Perfect. Okay, well, thanks very much.
Just, the proclamation, sorry to interrupt you, proclamation is preventable, but no cure, treatment, or what's...
Proven and...
Yes, yes.
Irreversible and preventable.
Yes.
Is preventable.
Yeah, thank you.
The incidence is incredibly high as well, and has all sorts of damaging impacts to society, so it's a major problem.
And it's, it's the aim of our committee to provide not just awareness, but support to the children that are affected by the ASB.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're at 6-3, we have Victoria Manson in attendance, who I believe just wanted to take a few minutes to talk to council. Good morning.
I have two, actually. The biking for bibles, there was supposed to be approximately 50, and when Nico approached me on my computer just before Christmas, he finally said, "Okay, stop hassling me, we're coming." And he had thought if he got a dozen people to want to bike up here, that they would put it on, well, they had 33 plus, I think it was five or six support staff that wanted to come up. You got the version back in February. I wanted to let you know that they made it into Chatwold. to let you know that they made it into Chatworth on the Saturday earlier and they started their bike trip. Media was incredibly great when they came in February. The RCMP and the Minister of Transportation was really good making sure the side roads, you know, where the gravel is for winter, were cleaned off because they have these really skinny tires. Like, they're not normal tread tires that were on my CCM handlebar bike that I had on Azteca. The motorists were incredibly good to them. They were amazed at how courteous and happy everybody was on their whole trip. They ran into a glitch when they got into Fairview on the Tuesday night. The storm we had waited for for five weeks hit on Wednesday morning with hail and rain. And Nico phoned me about 6:30 Wednesday morning and said, we're not coming into Dawson around 3:00. We're going to get trucked from Fairview because it's too dangerous on the road. We'll be there about 10 to 9:00. And I went, okay. The errands that I was going to do, I just did later on in the day. But the other thing they were amazed at was the people in Fairview that were helping to feed them and look after them the night before just said, oh, you need to ride to Dawson. Okay. So they put all the bikes in the truck. And people from there who went, oh, you can come to Dawson for the day. So they drove all these people in their vehicles and came and stayed and had lunch. And some stayed and went swimming as well. I want to thank you for those passes. They were really good. They went in in the afternoon and they thought the Dawson Pool was the best they'd ever been in. Well, I already knew that, but... And then some went around town. They also got caught in that downpour at quarter to 3:00, but that's okay. Media was great. They came and they all gathered at the mile zero, like on 10th Street. And they weren't exactly sure if they should go out in the middle of the intersection. I said, ah, don't worry, people aren't used to this. I'll just march out. You just follow me. Are you sure? Oh, yeah, they'll stop. It's not a big deal. So... And Media came and you guys did the coverage. They were hugely impressed with the rodeo. Some had seen it on the TV, but they actually, they saw it live. And they saw the faces of these drivers and there was dust and they, like, it's so intense. They just, they had a great time. I did up a card for counsel. And I'll read you what I wrote. And the other thing is, they were really amazed and pleased at the reception they got up to the Peace Country in Dawson Creek. I'm not amazed because, you know what, you guys do it all the time. I'm used to this. It's nothing unusual. I've spent almost half a century living in northern D.C. And this is just what they're like. And I realize that a lot of times you, counsel, gets hassled about stuff or gets whined about or complained. I have no problems with you at all. I think you do a great job. And everybody else knows now that it's a great place to come. So I'll read you what I wrote. And there's signatures of all the riders. Dear Mayor and Council, on behalf of all those great cyclists who traveled around the Peace Country earlier this month, thank you for your terrific generosity and good reception. Shaila shared some surprise gifts, coupons, pins, et cetera, and put all at ease. You have a great councilor. She came and had a wonderful time and met all these people. They were amazed at how wonderful and open all the communities welcomed them. They thought Dawson Pool had the best water slide. Amazing all these adults from 82 years down to 18 can still act like young kids. They will never forget their trip to the Peace Country and you folks helped to make their journey so worthwhile. Much appreciated and thanks again. They, there was one that we hosted from Niagara on the lake who came early and he stayed at our place for a few days. You had one from Texas and there was one young fellow that came all the way from Holland. He was on the computer. We're not really good with these electronic things, but he looked up and he was a Christian fellow and then he likes to bike. So, and he just was so amazed at everything. So thank you for your support. There was a few swim passes left. And there's a family out in Farmington that, when I talked to the pool staff, they said, well, if you can find somebody who can use these. So I hope that's okay. There's a family that is having a bit of a rough go, but the kids like to swim, so the extra went there, if that's all right. So thank you for your huge support. And like I said before, if there's anything you guys need or whatever, don't hesitate to call. If I can't do it, I'll find somebody who can. All righty?
Excellent. Well, thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
Thank you for the thank you.
Okay.
Maybe we'll pass that around if you don't mind. That'd be great.
Thanks, Victoria.
Well, it was our pleasure too, and I'm glad everything went so well. And I, like yourself, was not surprised at all by the positive comments of the hospitality and the nature of the people up here because that's why I love it here as well.
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move back into reports. That's where we were. And we were at 7:07, which is Report 12-187. And this is for a subdivision and development services bylaw update for the RFP. Counsel Parzal.
I'd like to move the report number 12-187 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. The subdivision and development service and bylaw update, RFP 212-21 be received. Further, the council award RFP 212-21 subdivision and development service and bylaw update to urban systems for $49,600 plus tax.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel Malkinson. Any questions, comments? Counsel Wilber.
I just needed some clarification. When I was reading this, it seemed that the criteria for putting a proposal forward was having appropriate team planners, engineers, relevant experience, local knowledge, experience in similar subdivision development servicing, bylaw updates, and all of that. And yet, the evaluation criteria, it was, I noted that you had to have experience with planning and engineering design in the city of Dawson Creek. So I'm just wondering, what is the difference between the proposal criteria and the evaluation criteria that, do all of these companies, have they had experience in planning and design in Dawson Creek? Like, what is the difference in what they had to put forward for a proposal regarding, and then the difference between how they were evaluated?
Thanks. I'll put that off to Jim.
Through your worship, the proposal qualifications speak to who can put a proposal forward. And the evaluation criteria rules all of those plus price together. So the evaluation criteria determines whether they're qualified, but it also weights price. It's basically the difference between the two.
Yeah, no, the price wasn't an issue. I was just wondering if there would have been a difference had the proposal said you needed to have experience with planning and engineering design in the city of Dawson Creek. Does that create a, I'm just wondering if the playing field was fair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question. I believe that that is, the evaluation criteria didn't restrict to people who had only worked previously for Dawson Creek. I think that is unclear in the report. I think it was local, meaning similar climate area. But I'll just check with Kevin on that.
Yeah, through your worship, that's exactly right. Again, that's part of the weighting in the evaluation is that it didn't limit people who, say, didn't have experience in the city of Dawson Creek. But again, it's weighted to people who do have experience within the city of Dawson Creek because of the local climate and unique features of the city.
It's fine. It raises more questions for you, but that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from counsel? Okay, so all those in favor then, opposed and it's carried. So 7:08 is Report 12-185, and this is for the Water Development Cost Charge Bylaw for the assist factors. Counsel Schuman.
I move the recommendation that Report number 12-185 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development cost charge bylaw for water, assist factor be received. And further, that council approve an assist factor of 20% for year one of the proposed water DCC bylaw and that the assist factor be phased to 10% for year two and beyond.
Okay, and seconded by Counsel Malkinson. And questions or comments? Counsel Parzal.
I'd just like to hear from staff how they arrived at the 20% and then the 10%.
Okay.
I'll kick that to Kevin, your worship.
Through your worship, the 20% was something that, looking at similar communities or programs out there, seems to be a fairly common number. Somewhere in that early stages, a lot of communities have transitioned from a higher percentage assist to a lower percentage assist. Bigger centers you'll see such as Metro Vancouver would have maybe an assist of only 1%, but in smaller communities you'll see a higher assist, especially. And we felt that that was, you know, recognizing the contribution that development has to the community, but, excuse me, not burdening the general taxation of all of the assists, so to speak. So, but it was a good starting point at 20 and moving to 10.
Do you have a continuation on that?
Yes, I do. Yeah. I recognize it's a difficult, it's somewhat arbitrary, and I appreciate that it is. I had this booklet on these development cost charges, and it's a very interesting booklet. And I must say that when I first read this report, I thought the assist was, and maybe I'm still thinking this as well, the assist factor for water is a little high. Because one of the factors in determining the assist factor, I guess, is the, how the existing population would benefit from this development, how much they might incidentally use those services. And so for roads, right, I see a higher assist factor. And I'm just wondering to myself, you know, the residential and other developments as it relates to water will happen because of the economic activity. And I don't see the assist factor negatively impacting that development. This is just an opinion, obviously. And so I'd just be interested in what other members of council think about it. Is, I, my instinct is to have a lower assist factor than what you have chosen. And I recognize the difficulty of assigning a figure. I mean, I'm all for, it is just that assist factor. I might support a, like a 20% as it relates to roads because the existing population might well use those roads from time to time. But the water development, I'm wondering about. So I just like to, I just would like to see if other council members have an opinion about this.
Counsel Schuman?
Yeah. So I was pleased to see the 20% for the first year and going down to 10% because in my mind, when we had the different consultation and information meetings and we were talking, my mind was sort of set on 10%, recognizing that the development community might need a little bit of time to adjust and get on board with it. Plus, I thought that once we set the DCC for the water, it sort of followed, like, we have to use that same amount for the roads and stuff? Was there...
Now, this is the starting point, but Jim, you want to?
Through your worship, no, each development cost charge, you would separately examine and set your assist factor, which must be 1%, but can be an amount greater than that. And Counsel Parzal is correct that water and sewer development cost charges are the ones where it is easiest to separate impacts of new growth absent any ability to use or piggyback. And roads are the most difficult. So you often find an assist factor in roads that is higher than in water or sewer.
Right now, our assist factor, Jim, is 100%.
Right now, the assist factor is 100%. And you are transitioning. So there is, the staff report believes that there is a need to provide a transitional period for the development community. The final figure that we are proposing, which is 10% for year two and beyond, is actually set on staff's belief that there is some, not only a monetary element to this, there's a perceptual element to this. And the feedback we got in our meetings with the developers is that we are not Vancouver and the developers have a problem with the 1%. So it's just a number. It's arbitrary. You can pick a different number. And you must pick at least 1%.
Yeah. So thanks. I guess I was thinking differently along the, how we would go about each one of them. But as far as whether or not I'm happy with this, I am happy with the 20% and then moving down to the 10% because that's what I had in mind to begin with, this 10%. So that's my opinion.
You know, for myself originally, when we were going through a lot of the meetings, I had actually been leaning even higher because I wanted to look at the phasing in aspect, just dealing with the developers. But, so 20% is a little lower than what I originally thought. But I'm fine with that because after talking with some of the developers, we need in, need a bit of that phase in, and they're aware that this is coming. Excuse me. But my question, Jim, is timing. I didn't see it in the report. So when we talked about year one, year two, and we talked about phasing it in and giving a grace period before we even start with year one, what was the thought process around that of where we might actually start implementation?
Okay, well, I'll kick that over to Kevin. But I, just as context, you are lawfully required to give some notice and you are morally required to make sure that people who already made their investment decisions don't get handed a new financial equation after the fact. So I'll kick over to Kevin on implementation.
Through your worship, Jim is correct. And we, there is a notification period, a grace period, so to speak. So from the time that council considers the bylaw, which we would bring forward subsequent decision on the assist factor, there's basically a one year's grace period. So what we are seeing is really what you're shooting for is a January 2014 start is really isn't when it would come into play.
Excellent. Thank you. Counsel Schuman?
So we did look at that development for, is that already on the books then? Like, the Park Hill area, that little sort of, it's on the books now, so it wouldn't be in on this, right?
Well, provided they've finished following through the development permits and everything else, I'd assume, right?
But they're already on the books.
Anything that's in the stream now is not affected for what they have done to date. However, folks who come for development or building permit subsequent to January 2014 will be impacted. But that gives them time to price accordingly.
Because some of these developments, that one might be similar. They phase develop, so they'll do a phase one or phase two, which might not be captured under this. But then if they don't do phase three until 2014 or 15, then it would be. And I'm sure they'll be aware of that when deciding on how they price things or when they develop. Okay, Counsel Parzal?
The difference in the, attached to the report that you gave us is some material from the consultants. And it's interesting to read that the, there's a chart there with the various sort of levels of municipal assist and its impact on single-family, townhouses, apartment-dwelling units. And the difference between, let's say, 10% and 5% on a single-family or duplex is a matter of $197. The reason why I'm reflecting, I guess, on this for waters, I've said earlier, I don't see how the existing population would accrue any benefits from the water system. But roads is another matter. And so part of, just part of my thinking is whatever we have as the assist factor will also, for water, will also be reflected upon when we come to sewer. I suggest it might be a comparable assist factor. I suggest it might be a comparable assist factor, but that's, that's something for council to decide, obviously, but roads would be higher. And so if we set it at 10% as per your recommendation, then the road one would presumably be somewhat higher. And I'm wondering if that 10% will become like the benchmark or we'll make other decisions on, and I, I'm just, part of that, I just think it's a little high.
Jim?
As I say, this is a crapshoot, isn't it?
Through your worship, Counselor Parslow is completely correct. What you do now will be sort of a benchmark. You will, if 10% is your water assist factor, in fairness, then you'll have to look at the differences between water and sewer when deciding if the assist factor will be different for sewer, and that if you do roads, it'll be the difference between water and sewer and roads. So yes, you're setting a benchmark.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So right now, the motion on the floor is as per the recommendation, which will take in place probably in 2014, starting with 20%, with a one-year grace going down to 10%, which is the recommendation. Okay, so no other discussions?
I'd like to make an amendment, just so we have a little more engagement on this. I'd like to amend the recommendation that the assist factor be 10% in the first year and adjusting it to 5% in subsequent years.
Okay, 10 to 5, so 20 to 10, so is there a second for that change? Counselor Wilbur? Okay, so any discussion on the amendment?
Well, my thinking when Counselor Parslow said that was getting to 5, I guess, was what I had in my mind when we went through this process, was being at 5%. So I second to put it on the floor for discussion, but really, even if it, I was thinking 20, 10, 5 sort of thing to drop it down, so, because we are setting that bar, but what are other people's thoughts, I guess?
Okay, I mean, 10, 5, I mean, for me, the biggest thing is, is I would rather have a softer phase-in period. To go from 100% to 10% is quite a change to our developers, recognizing the fact that, you know, we're in a hot market right now, so it's not going to completely change necessarily the developments happening, but that is going to be quite a financial hit to the developers, which, by the way, they pass on to the homeowners or anybody trying to afford a new home. It's not the developers that are actually paying this. It's not coming out of their pocket. It's coming out of the people who are going to be buying the houses or doing, at the end. You know, so my personal thought is, you know, I don't mind 20. I would have actually gone even higher for the first year, maybe phased it over two or three or four years even, if 5% is where council wants to get to, but myself, I'm a little not in favor of going to 10% right away and putting that shock on the market. That's just me, but I open the floor.
I think they have, sorry, I think they have, they have a year to be phased into this. It's a bit of encouragement to get it done, I guess, before it's implemented, and they know what's coming for, at that end of the year's grace period. It's not an uncommon practice, so I, I mean, we're behind in implementing this, I think, as far as comparing ourselves to other communities that already have it stated, and our housing market is what it is now. We, there is a huge difference between our low, lower-priced housing and our high-priced housing, so.
Yep, and, you know, there could be no merit to my comment of being competitive, but when you look at neighboring communities around us that actually do have this, that are like 30 or 40% assist factor, we have to, you know, it probably doesn't make any bearing on it at all, but that's stuff I think of. Counselor Malkinson?
It's just what I was going to say, your worship, you know, you take a look at Fort St. John's, they started with a 40% assist this year, 25% assist in 2014, and then 15%, you know, leveling out of 15 in 2016. I don't know, that's probably what I'd be in favor of, you know, that seems a little bit less dramatic, and, you know, there's more opportunity for engagement and, you know, stuff like that, so I'll probably be against this amendment here.
Which is why I think staff probably shot in the middle of where, where they thought it might be, hard to say. Anyway, any discussion? Right now, the, well, be voting on the amendment. The amendment is to change it to 10 and then to 5% after one year. No further discussion on that, so all those in favor of the amendment to the motion. Two, all those opposed, and it's defeated, so then to the original motion that was on the floor, which was 20 and then 10. Is there any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, so all those in favor. Opposed, Counselor Wilbur, but it is passed. Good debate, everyone, thank you.
So when do we, when is the sewer project going to be done, if I may ask?
Go ahead.
Yeah, through your worship, as you know, since you've been through the process on the water, the biggest piece that must be in place is differentiation of your future costs between what exists, what is necessary for the existing users, and you've been through all of that on your water, and you have a water study, and you've had rate increases and more proposed, so you know what the cost if there was no growth is. You have the estimates for what growth will put on, and then you can go to the distributing that amount through an assist factor. For sewer, you're just having your sewer master plan completed. It will tell you what needs to be done for your existing users. Then we'll be in a position to contemplate what is needed to be done for growth, but because you don't have the first piece in place yet on sewer, which is to know what would have to happen if there isn't another building hooked up, you can't go to the next phase. So it's just the gathering of information is required first. You're going to get your sewer master plan this fall, so you'll be in a much better situation to know.
Okay, thank you. So 7-9 is report 12-193, and this is around our Dawson Creek submission for the carbon tax review. Counselor Schuman?
I would move the recommendation that report number 12-193 from the Director of Community Services, Service, regarding the city of Dawson Creek's carbon tax review be received. Further, that the proposed letter regarding the city of Dawson Creek's submission to the carbon tax review be approved.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any questions or discussion then? And I know I don't like to wordsmith, Jim, but the last sentence and the, the second last sentence, I guess, needs to be wordsmithed, but it's not grammatically correct. "We encourage the province should study the impact."
We encourage the province to study.
Yeah, or something, yeah, so if we don't mind, just, since it's going to have my signature. If we could make that change. Any, Counselor Schuman?
I thought they did a really, it was a really good job sort of capturing what the feeling was amongst all of the councils, so let's have a look.
Yeah, actually, I'm, myself as well, considering the lively debate we had on, at that session. Further questions? Counselor Parslow?
No questions. I'd be voting against this simply because I do not believe in the carbon tax as it's structured in this province. I notice with interest that the savings that to corporate taxes are incredibly high as compared to income tax. One of the big concerns is that the study done by, I forget the name of the bank, before the carbon tax would start to have a bite, its rate needs to be increased by, from $30 a ton to $200 a ton. And so I just don't agree with the structure. I'm all for a carbon tax, but levied in a different way, so I'd be voting against this.
Any other comments then? Counselor Malkinson?
This is one of the unenviable things, well, one of the things that I don't really enjoy doing is, you know, lobbying and telling other levels of government exactly, you know, what to do. We've got enough controversy at this level, it seems sometimes, and I don't really, I don't really enjoy going through this process too much, but.
If I can help, though, we're in this, we're not lobbying, they actually sent us a letter asking us to do this? So we're not actually proactively responding?
Well, I, all right, I just want to say that I don't really, principally and fundamentally, I don't really, I don't know, as I was introduced to the carbon tax, I didn't really think it was a good idea, you know, making a sin tax out of, you know, the environmental issue, you know, it's one of the most important issues out there. I think that a lot of the funds that we receive from the carbon tax should go towards, you know, education and cost-saving, energy-efficient projects and environmental research, you know, that seems like a more logical approach rather than putting money into tax savings for other people. That's just, that's just my opinion, I'm one of the, one of the sevens, so I suppose because of that, I'll probably be voting against it.
Okay, Counselor Schuman?
So just to comment, let's do Counselor Malkinson's comments. I believe that they did capture that, that thought in here.
Second paragraph, somewhat.
With regards to new taxation, or the new money received, I mean, certainly if we were to pull back all of those tax rate adjustments that were made in order to have the carbon tax be revenue-neutral, there would be a genuine uproar within the province, but our submission here is that any of the new revenue, should they go, you know, to be collecting more in the future, would go to reducing the impact on, on the emissions with regards to funding initiatives, that kind of thing. So I, I'm not sure why you would be opposing this then.
Well, maybe I'm thinking more top-down, your worship, but I don't know, I think it's, oh, it's a global issue, you know, it's, I don't, you don't want to have infighting between other provinces. If we, you know, tax the amount that, if we tax the amount that the people have recommended taxing to make the carbon tax actually effective and deter people from polluting in the proper ways, then people just open up coal mines in other provinces and other countries and stuff like that, it's, you need a, I don't know, you need a global approach to it.
Which I believe is why in our last paragraph, we're saying, you know, we don't have a stand on whether it should go up or go down, we're just saying that it should be evaluated for its effectiveness. Counselor Wilbur?
I don't think that the carbon tax is going anywhere. I think we have a carbon tax, so if we want to have a voice and be a part of it, then we're best to have our say and submit it like we were asked. Otherwise, we stand on the sidelines and we have no right to complain or applaud or say anything, so I, I will be voting in favor, I did second motion, because I think we need to have a voice and that the carbon tax is not going anywhere that I see in the future.
That's, Counselor Malkinson, one more?
Your worship, that's good enough for me. I, yeah, maybe I was thinking a little bit more fundamentally, but I, I agree with Counselor Shaly. I, yeah, I agree with her.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, BC is showing great leadership in this matter, and, you know, so everybody else isn't on board just yet, it's just a matter of time.
Good, so we'll go round and round, so I'll call the questions. So all those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Parslow, but it does pass. 7-10 is report 12-186 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, and this is for the Seddon Hall and Pioneer Village Roof. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move the report number 12-186 from the Deputy Director of Community Services v. Seddon Hall and Pioneer Village Roof Replacement Tender 2012-19 be received. Further, that Mainline Roofing Company be awarded the contract for the bid price of $82,883 plus taxes.
Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And 7-11 is report 12-192, and this is for the arena advertising request for proposals. Counselor Wilbur?
I make motion that report number 12-192 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding arena advertising, RFP 2012-24 be received. Further, that Terry O'Dwyer be awarded the contract for a 15% return of the arena advertising gross revenue.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Schuman. Any questions? Counselor Malkinson?
I'm curious, your worship, the origin of this, I think the origin of this was a request from the Dawson Creek Minor Hockey Association.
That's correct.
And I'm curious about why they're not, why we don't have any offer from them here.
I'm not sure either. Jim?
Through your worship, staff is similarly curious. Over when Dawson Creek Minor Hockey opposed, or proposed that you directly awarded to them without RFP, we heard from not only them, but several other commercial enterprises and several other nonprofit societies that they saw that as a viable fundraiser and they would be interested in bidding, and yet they have not. So I would assume it is, those who have looked at it have decided either that there isn't enough revenue there to make it worth their while if they're a commercial operation, or those that are volunteer groups have decided they don't have sufficient volunteers, but we were anticipating flood.
Which is why we went to an RFP.
This is why I went to RFP, is because so many people had expressed interest.
Yeah. So, go ahead, Counselor.
I just don't, yeah, I don't get it. Never mind.
So any other comments then? Counselor Parslow?
I was going to say, don't be surprised, you hear, this happens a lot. People make things and then they never come up with it, so it's quite common.
Yeah. Okay, so all those in favor then? Opposed? It's carried. 7-12 is report 196 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, NAR Park Roof, sorry, NAR Roof Replacement and Structural Repairs Tender. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move the recommendation that report, sorry, move that report number 12-197 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, where NAR Roof Replacement and Structural Repairs Tender 2012-23 be received. Further, that Hedy Construction be awarded the contract for a price of $399,372 plus taxes.
Excellent. Seconded by Counselor Wilbur. Any comments? This is phase three of phase how many?
Well, through your worship, it's phase three of a two-phase project. As you know, when this was first proposed by the Dawson Creek Historical Society and their then-president, the late Jerry Clara, this was, this was proposed to be work that could be done in two years, and for a variety of reasons, largely having to do with funding accumulation, it has been spread over three phases and four years, but we are nearing renovating that building to a standard that will allow it to be used many years into the future, so progress is being made.
Yay.
Okay, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 7-13 is report 12-194 from the Energy Manager, and this is around the GeoPower Feasibility Request for Proposals. Counselor Schuman?
So I'd make the recommendation that report number 12-194 from the Energy Manager regarding GeoPower Feasibility be received, and further that council direct staff to contract Aurealis GeoPower Incorporated to assess the potential resource and business development of geothermal for combined heat and power.
Seconded by Counselor Parslow. And any comments? Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so I've had sitting on my desktop a report called Geothermal Energy Resource Potential of Canada, for, I guess it's been about a year sitting there, and so I opened it up the other day and read it, and, you know, I always say we have it all here in the Northeast, well, we also have a really wonderful potential for geothermal, for the production of electricity. You know, if we could do this, I mean, I know I was a big, big sort of supporter of the biomass project out at the multiplex in an effort to reduce our natural gas consumption and our emissions out there, about a third, I think, of the city's emissions. So, you know, if this can do the same thing as well as create electricity, I, I think this is, this is something that I'm, will be very interested to see what they, what they can gather up.
What the study shows.
Bring back to us.
So Counselor McFadden, and then Parslow?
I think I need geothermal 101 here, your worship. I'm looking at the map here, and it looks like someone's going to drill a hole to halfway to China, and then we're going to pump cold water down it?
Well, no, that's a recycled, if you want to look at it that way, so.
Through your worship, Matt would be happy to answer that question.
I'm sure, yeah, well, I.
That's why he's here.
Well, it says it's reinjected cold water and then pumped hot water. I don't know what's going on here. what's going on here.
Thanks, Matt.
On behalf of Your Worship, the mayor pointed out that this is actually a closed loop, so that the water is actually heated and then re-injected, so it's cooled in the sense that the heat's been extracted out of the process to power the electricity as well as the heating of the buildings. It just gets recycled over and over again, so there's no actual fresh water going into the system once it's already intact.
If it makes you feel better, I've installed and worked on these systems, I can come put one in your house.
Thank you.
For a small price.
I, I think that the systems you installed are a little different than what we're looking at here.
A little bit more, a little bit more skookum.
So how does the hot water generate electricity?
Steam.
Yeah, Matt, do you want, maybe go to 102 now?
This could be a long process.
Did you read the report?
Sir, once you have the, the hot water, it's like any typical generation capacity, whether it be nuclear, oil, natural gas, it's just a matter of creating that steam and the expansion of that steam powers your turbine that creates electricity.
Similarly for biomass for that matter.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Parslow?
Well, I, I've always been very cynical about the biomass idea, so I'm really pleased, I, I agree with everything that you reported, stated in your report, sort of captured my thoughts about, matched many of my thoughts about biomass and my study of that, that matter, so I am delighted to see that this is before council. It is regrettable that it didn't get initiated at the start of the construction of, of the multiplex, I guess it was, judged the upfront costs were too high, but as you stated, we would have almost paid for it all by now, so sometimes you have to take the risk and pay out some money at the front end to, and, well, there was no risk with this because geothermal is a well-established technology, it's not experimental, it's, there are some good examples of residential ambition in the community, so it's, I just regret that it didn't happen initially, but glad to support this recommendation.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, through You, Your Worship, on that topic, I share the regret that Counsel Parslow is, is identifying, and especially, you know, want to identify that there was a very active group in town. Dave Nelson was the, the number-one proponent at the time that the multiplex was in its conceptual phase, strongly advocating for this expenditure, and the expenditure was removed from the project because, those of you who have had insomnia and have read the historical narrative, fully understand that we were in a position where every dollar could potentially be fatal to the project proceeding, and it was exactly eliminated because of the upfront cost, but it was an example of a decision where, you know, the payback would have been relatively short, which was kind of irrelevant because there wasn't any dollars for the upfront cost, but the advocates of, from those days identified pretty much what, what you're seeing in this study, that it would, there was abundant geothermal and it would pay for itself.
Okay, any further questions? Or Counsel Parslow, you want to keep?
No, just, just, I, I do not wish to come across as being petty, but I think we need to, to be clear that when we talk about energy emissions and so on, to differentiate between the corporation emissions and the community emissions, this is a major factor of the corporation's emissions, and I find in talking to people in the community, they get confused over those issues, so it is think, we need to be clear, we're talking about our, the corporation city of Dawson Creek's emissions as opposed to the community's emissions.
Yeah, through You, Your Worship, we actually, the report calls for what is essentially a business case completely around the corporation's own internal financial situation at the multiplex with whatever the predicted effects are for only our own emissions.
Okay, any further questions, comments then? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. Thanks, Matt. So it takes us to 714, which is 12-197, the Chief Financial Officer, the Statement of Financial Condition. Counsel Malkinson?
I move that we receive this report and that we include it as part of the 23rd public consultation and budget process.
Seconded by Counsel Wilder. Any questions? Counsel Malkinson, go ahead.
I just want to say to our CFO, it must have taken a long time to put that together, and thank you very much for your hard work, it's great.
You're very welcome. Yeah, if I may, Your Worship-
Please.
Just go through it a little bit on a high level. It does take a long time to go through the process from start to finish of updating the information and looking at the graphs, looking at the trends, documenting, you know, the different measures, but, you know, when you're in the middle of it and you say, well, what am I doing this for, you, you have to finish the process before everything comes together in that it basically, the integration from one item to the other comes clear by the time you've done the process, so, I mean, even though it's very complex and it's, it takes long, a lot of time, I think the benefits set of the report are something that benefits the organization so.
I'm just smirking because I read through it twice and came to the realization of, what am I doing this for?
Yeah.
That's why we have a CFO. Any other comments? Nope, so thanks, Shelley, all those in favor, opposed, it's carried. We have no bylaws, so it takes us to Mayor's Business. First one I'll do is, there was a question earlier on in the meeting around a water update, maybe Jim, if we could actually-
I'll just kick that to Kevin, Your Worship.
Thanks.
Through You, Your Worship, reports this morning, the weir, water's 1.5 centimeters over the weir, which is up, down, it's, it's up slightly from over the weekend, I passed a shower through during that thunderstorm last night, so it's, it's holding over the weir, which is good, and all the reservoirs are full. Usage, don't have yesterday's usage in front of me, but the usage there last week was, was close to our targets, 1.8, you know, after the rain, it was low, a few days later it gets hot, you know, creeps up again, so far it's okay.
Good, 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 well, it's not, we could use more rain, but-
We could use more.
Counsel McFadden, is that okay?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, second under Mayor's Business, I want to bring forward, we have a letter here from Mr. Randy Haney in front of us as well, and I just wanted to bring this up under Mayor's Business, because I want to maybe kick that over to Jim or staff as well to give us an update, because there's some accusations in here that the city is slowing down this development, and I'm just curious on what the background is to this.
Yes, Your Worship, it's, it came in too late to be a late item, but since you won't meet again until middle of September, we thought if you could receive it and get a staff response, that that would be ideal, so I'll just kick that over to Kevin again.
Through You, Your Worship, I'll just give you a bit of a timeline on the applications that Mr. Haney speaks of. They're actually not building permits, they're development permits, so, applications were dropped off as June 14th, staff reviewed them, they were incomplete, we prepared their response to Mr. Haney, sent that on June 20th, so we then had a meeting to go over that with Mr. Haney on June 26th, we provided them all the information and what we were looking for, segments out of the OCP guidelines. The issues with these development purposes of Mr. Haney's property are in the floodplain, so there are some more stringent requirements for him or for this property as opposed to maybe property elsewhere in the city that aren't in the floodplain, so that's something to be aware of. So we provided them the information on June 26th, Mr. Haney came into the office July 25th, had a discussion with the city planner, we had it that time, questioned why nothing had moved forward, we reiterated what we needed, which we had not received. Ultimately, what we need to proceed is a report from an engineer stating how to mitigate the flood, A, whether the, the project can proceed within the floodplain, and if it can, how it must be built to do so. Ultimately, what we're doing here is protecting the owner and future owners of the property from, but, so until we have that engineer's report, we, we can't proceed with the development permits, which then would lead to ultimately building permits if everything was for it, so.
So, long story short, reading through his accusations, if Mr. Haney was to supply the information that the building department and yourself have told him to supply, he'd be able to move forward.
We'd be able to prepare reports and bring them forward to council for your consideration.
Okay, Counsel Parslow?
Well, I'd just like to comment that I, since being on council, I've been, through your leadership, I, I believe that we've always dealt with things as expeditiously as possible, and I've always thought the staff has bent over backwards to bring things to council as quickly as possible, and you have organized council to deal with those things as expeditiously as possible, so I, I have every confidence that everything's been done as quickly as possible, because that is the consistent practice of staff and, and yourself, so it's regrettable that these perceptions are out there, but it's inconsistent with everything I've experienced since being on council.
Yeah, thank you, and, and that's, I mean, everybody in the development community that I talk to has nothing but accolades, kudos for our staff as well for dealing with everything in a timely manner, especially in comparison to most other communities, we do a great job with that, recognizing the growth. This, to me, is just a, a matter of, you know, there's information that needs to be supplied, once that's supplied, the comment of being treated fairly, the issue here is it's a floodplain, if it was up on the hill, we wouldn't be in this situation, so somebody who lives in a different area might not have to follow the same guidelines or regulations due to being close to a water course, Mr. Haney is trying to build next to one, and this, as Kevin said, is not only, not only for his protection, but, you know, somebody down the road that might buy that building in case there's a flood again, we need to ensure, it's our due diligence to ensure that when somebody builds, that it's done as safely as possible.
Absolutely, and you see the damage that occurred the last year, I mean, in that very vicinity, I think a home or two, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, a home or two had to be temporarily evacuated and major bridge repair and so on, so it's-
I believe so.
And given the information that I've heard about the more regular occurrence of these flood issues forecast by the, I guess the Insurance Bureau of Canada, is that correct?
Yes.
This is even more pressing caveat on development in floodplains.
Sure, Jim?
Through You, Your Worship, I should just also mention that because this is an issue that the provincial government has identified as being significant, there is actually provincial legislation in the Act that governs us, that requires us to, requires all municipalities in BC to pay special attention to these floodplain areas, to require the qualified engineers' report, it is, it's not something that you could waive even if you wish to do so, and of course, there's no good reason for you to waive it either, so.
Okay, thank you, just to be official, so we're, so we have this captured, I'm going to make the motion that we received this letter for information, so it's captured in there, and seconded by Counsel Malkinson, and then Counsel Wilder, you wanted to-
Oh, well, I was just wondering if perhaps we shouldn't write Mr. Haney and Mr. Moxma letters stating that until they supply staff with the appropriate information they've requested, a report cannot be done and brought towards council. I think in this incident, that council should be standing behind our staff and make it very clear that they are doing their job, they're doing it very well, and I, I don't like this letter, to be honest, I think it's condescending and rude to our staff, and I think perhaps council should make it clear to them that until they provide the appropriate information and include the information Mr. Schutz presented regarding provincial legislation, that it won't be looked at by council, it cannot be brought to us, something to that effect.
Okay, well, the motion is for information, but with that, we can send a letter to Mr. Haney saying we received his report and he needs to continue working with staff. Jim, do you have advice?
Through You, Your Worship, if you wish, you could amend your motion to include responding in the fashion that Counsel Wilder has identified. Normally, if you receive for information, we'll send a letter back saying thank you for, that council's taken no action, so perhaps you want to make that amendment?
Sure.
I, I just think I'd like to make it clear that our staff is doing their job and we respect them, and that without proper information, they can't report to us.
And we will gladly give you the permit once you-
Opportunity to do so, that's right.
Um, stay away from that, because we don't know what the engineer's report might say, it's not feasible to build there.
That's right, but I do think we should make it, I do think we should make it clear that we stand behind our staff, that they are doing their job correctly, and to, to word it however nicely we can, but I think that should be done.
If we need it worded nicely, we'll have someone other than myself write it.
I'll help you.
Put some flowers on it, too.
Okay, so that's like amendment to the motion, we won't change that, thank you, and Counsel Malkinson?
I was just curious who the letter was sent to, was it sent to you, Your Worship?
It says to Mayor and Council, it was sent to all of us.
Was it dropped off at City Hall by someone?
It came in late Friday, so that's why it didn't make this, which is why staff photocopied and gave it to us today, so at least we'd have it.
I understand, okay, yeah, and I was just going to say what Ms. Wilder said, that we respond to these guys, so.
Okay, excellent, any further questions then? So we will respond, so all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. And the only other thing I had under Mayor's Business as well was just to say thanks to everybody, I want to say thanks to the community, being in Stage Three water, and you hear the usage, how it's gone down, I've had very limited comments or complaints out in the community, people seem to really understand the situation we're in, when you go two and a half months without any significant rain, it's kind of a given, and it's not just Dawson Creek, it seems to be, a lot of Western North America seems to be in a drought or rollercoaster situation with Mother Nature right now, so. With that, Cheryl was quite happy to not get a sunburn thing at the fall fair due to the, the roof being up, and again, kudos to everybody involved, to Connie and her entire group, amazing, I went down every day to partake, Saturday, people were parking as far away as inland Chrysler and walking because there was absolutely nowhere to park, so I'm looking forward to seeing what the actual totals were for people through the gate, because it seemed to me like there was more people there on Saturday than I've ever seen of all the fall fairs I've ever been to, so, good for them, that's right. On that, we'll move into the diary, Jim?
I'll just kick that over to Greg, Your Worship.
Thank you, Your Worship. At the last meeting of council, I believe, I said I was looking forward to not reporting on the reclaimed water plant ever again, but there's actually a couple of things that I probably should report on, because they're, they're good things, if they were bad, I might, might have kept my mouth shut, they're good things.
So close to retirement, right?
Yeah, we, we believe we have a pretty good idea of what the final cost of the project is going to be, the overall project, and it will be just shy of eighteen million, about seventeen-point-nine million dollars, which is three-point-seven million over the original estimate, it seems to be a song I sing a lot, but the happy news is that Shell has stepped forward and has committed in writing to us that they will pick up that overage, and I, I believe that shows very good faith on, on, on their behalf, and, and they have been good partners for us on this, and, and I really thank them for having done that. And the other thing I wanted to mention is you all have received your invitations, and I believe some of the media has as well, for the opening on September the 7th, and I really urge you to attend that, because you'll get to see exactly what a spectacular facility that, that we've got in partnership with Shell, and it's, couldn't have come at a better, in a better year, to see all that reclaimed water going out instead of potable water. As far as the Kelton Cook Center is concerned, things are going quite well on that, I was, I was in there on Friday, they had a painting crew upstairs. upstairs. So, they're, they were painting through the weekend, and they're still going at it today. They're going to do the upstairs, move to the downstairs. They've got a lot of the flooring already in place in advance. They've got it all covered over with paper so that they can paint and not wreck that. A lot of the washrooms are done with those tiles that were approved here in council. And I have to say, you know, they look really good. I'm one of those guys who can't look at a, at a piece of paint and figure out what it's going to look like on a wall, so these look really good. Something that made me particularly happy is the retractable seating in the theater is in place, and it is awesome. And man, what a difference that's going to be from what we do now when we go to K-PAC. There won't be, there literally will not be a bad seat in the house. The crews are working 60 hours a week. They've got, the offices are framed in gyp rock, they're just waiting for the glazing, which will come in after the painting is done. Millwork is underway, the doors are being hung. There's, the place is a beehive of activity right now. The contractor is really working hard to get, to have those top two floors finished by the end of this month. The one glitch in the system may be the mechanical. I was talking to the mechanical guys, they have all their materials and equipment on site. But, if you've ever put together anything from IKEA or Walmart, you know how complicated that can be. And, oh my gosh, the system that they've got there is, is also pretty amazing. And they're about 60% complete. So, they're, they're working hard, they've got a lot of guys on it. But, they may end up being a little beyond that deadline, which is, I don't think, too huge a deal. And electrical is 95% complete. So, they will probably be done and out of there this week. So, things are, things are coming along quite well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just to be clear, our mechanical system did not come from IKEA or Walmart.
I won't vouch for that. I'm pretty sure.
Jump back to the water reclamation. I just want to say publicly thanks to Shell as well, because we have been able to continue on with the contract with them. We are delivering water to them. Like everything in this world, it seems goes way over budget, and it's good to have them step up. So, the initial amount of money that the city of Dawson Creek was putting in did not change, even though it went almost $4 million over. So, a big thanks to Shell for that. A lot of people might have noticed too, back to the insomnia comment earlier from Jim, that the federal government put out a report looking at treatment facilities and regulations and requirements that are going to be needed in the coming years for municipalities. So, the way I understand that is, we're done. The regulations that the federal government are going to be imposing on communities for their treatment. Because of this facility, which now is pretty well paid for by Shell, we will actually not be in a financial situation to have to build a new treatment facility. So, that actually is a good news situation as well. Jim, you look like you wanted to either correct me or say something on that.
Through Your Worship, I just caution that I have a great deal of faith in the ability of my federal bureaucratic colleagues to invent new regulations over time. So, yes, we're going to be compliant with the regulations that we were advised are going to come into place. And that's, was one of the justifications for the project in the first place. However, a single incident, such as the Lockardon Water Incident, can lead to sweeping new regulations, and we'll just have to see where we're at at that point.
Sure. The last question I had was on the water fill station, Greg. Where are we at with that? What's, what's happening with that? Just the timelines and that?
The water fill station is complete. It's being commissioned. The, it's not open for use right at this point, because we are, we're still exploring what we are able to do in terms of pricing the water and in terms of how, of how we go about actually selling it, whether or not it'd be free for all, open to anybody, or whether we do some alternative method of dispensing of it. The facility is operating better than we had hoped, and we actually have more water than we had hoped. But, keeping in step with that is the demand. It has also gone up quite a bit, and we know for a fact that there are new companies out there who would be happy to have exclusive use of everything that we can put out. So, we have to explore that. We are hoping to set up a conference call with our lawyer to discuss what our possibilities are this week. And we will probably have a report coming to council, certainly within the next couple of months, as to where we're going to go with that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McFadden?
The reclaimed water is not yet being used for things like soccer fields and ball diamonds, is that correct?
Through Your Worship, that is correct, and it's unfortunate, because we're producing a very high-quality product. The Ministry of Environment wants to just be assured that we can produce that consistently over time. So, we've been doing ongoing testing and sending the results to them. It's very unlikely that they will give us approval this year to use it. It's late in the year anyway. But, we are confident that beginning of next year, we'll be using it to water and to wash down streets and all the rest of that, because it's, it's a very high-quality product, that's for sure.
Thank you.
But to that, yeah, unfortunately, even if it's there, we have to have the permit, approval. So, Counselor Wilbur?
I actually just want to speak to the quality, because when I was at the Get to Know Your Watershed, we were introduced to, I believe it's melon, cav, the two little goldfish that seemed quite content swimming around in that reclaimed water. So, they were happier than my goldfish at home, I must say. So, I just wanted to comment on that.
Sure. Thanks for that.
Quality's good.
Counselor Parsons?
How do you assess the happiness of goldfish?
They looked very content swimming around, and they're alive.
Sure. On that, is there anything else on the diary?
They'd be unhappy.
Yeah, upside down.
As a zoologist in my former life, I always, I always pick up anthropomorphic statements, you know.
Thanks for that.
I opened a door there, so.
So, if there's nothing else on the diary, thanks, Greg, for that possibly last great diary.
You went out with a...
We'll move to the consent calendar. Counselor Malkinson?
There's one item on here, Your Worship, that I think might be worth speaking about.
Yes, so would you like to remove number two, which is the regional library, future libraries?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was, it seems like an interesting conference, and it might be something that may have merit and maybe a council representative or a representative of the library board attending. I think that I'd personally like to go, and I think if I could extend the invitation to a member of the library board, that'd be great as well. I don't know what council thinks about that.
Yeah, and I know they have a budget as well for going to events like this, so it'd be, so let's, just for cleanliness, let's remove number two out of the consent calendar, and then a motion to approve the consent calendar. So, Counselor Malkinson and Counselor McFadden, all those in favor, both carried. And then number two, which is the Fraser Valley Regional Library, being removed. A motion, I guess, isn't required, but Counselor Malkinson would like to attend that, and I think that would be a great idea, actually. Counselor Schuman?
I would, I'd make the motion that if Counselor Malkinson is interested in attending, I mean, as soon as I saw it, I thought, hey, Duncan should go with that. So, if you're willing to do that, that'd be really great on behalf of ourselves.
Sure. Sure. We don't usually, but what the heck, we'll make a motion for someone to go. So, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. And thanks, Duncan. Yeah, please bring it forward to the library board, too. That's a great idea.
I spoke to the chair last night, and I just let him know that that was on the agenda. And he said it was an interesting prospect, and he didn't want to make it seem like it was a request from the library or anything. But, yeah, he said it seems interesting.
Good. So, work with Cindy or Janet to help with the arrangements. Excellent. Strategic priorities chart, Jim?
Nothing new on the strategic priorities chart, Your Worship.
Okay, so that takes us to...
Can I comment, ask some questions about that?
On that, sure, thanks.
Forgive me about this, it's just my, I guess, didn't mind at times. The, just if you can just look at the top section, the raw water reservoir design, we're going to receive that and cost estimates December, correct? I'm just reading this from the, from the chart.
Yes, Your Worship.
Yep. The Encana Event Center Business Plan, is that March of next year?
No, March has come and gone.
Yeah, I've acknowledged, that's why, and I don't remember seeing the business plan, but...
We haven't yet. Through Your Worship, when we initially tagged this timeline, we knew it was very...
Optimistic?
Yes, yes. But, I can say that, you know, we've had a number of meetings with Global Spectrum, and they had representatives from Philadelphia come up two weeks ago. And Ryan is starting to draft some of the information. So, yeah, more realistic will be probably October.
Okay. Can I continue?
Continue.
The airport sustainability plan, short term, we received a report from consultants. I'm just wondering why that isn't deleted. Is it because not all elements have been implemented?
Through Your Worship, we're still waiting to get the signed agreement with Navcan to take over the flight services building. We have a deal, we just don't have the signed document. As soon as we have that, the short-term objectives will have been met.
Okay. And one last comment, the scheduled air carrier information, what's that about?
Through Your Worship, that was the outreach to WestJet, which has now happened. Actually, that could come off.
That could be struck. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Schuman?
Sorry, I was, I thought the scheduled air carrier information was like the ticket pull or something.
It was all part of that.
It was all part of it, but you've already authorized the use of the ticket pull, so all of that, I mean, that has been done, so it can't come off.
Okay. And I guess a reminder to council, when we do our strategic sessions, is it's great to be optimistic on this, but also realistic when we're trying to tag dates to work having to be done. But, thanks. I know staff is still working on those. No other questions on strategic priorities? So, move off that. There was nobody in the question-answer period? Tyra?
No one has signed up today.
Thank you. Sorry.
Just to make a note for our watchers of Channel 10, this item, 13 on our agenda, is specifically for residents in the community who want to come and ask council questions and receive answers. So, I know there was some question out in the community of whether or not people could come in and ask council questions. And on absolutely every agenda that we put out, every meeting we have, there is a place for the residents of our community to come forward and ask us these questions. I just wanted to clarify that.
Come on down.
I'm down.
Questions from the media who are here? A little reluctant, Matthew, now after that, Your Worship.
But, hey, just one, as Bud, as your delegation mentioned, the contribution of the city of Dawson Creek to the highway nomination project, what was that contributing in?
There was a financial, and I can't remember off the top of my head how much.
Through Your Worship, any idea, shall I, off the top of your head?
I'm going to say there was a commitment of $10,000 a year for three years.
Well, we can certainly get Matt the information before.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I don't know. Off the top of my head, so.
Yeah. But, also Greg, I have to ask you to put you on the spot here, but, or I guess maybe to the mayor, I guess, is there any sweeping into the issue with the leavings or the basement flooding at the heart center?
Yeah, we are working on that. Council is discussing it. So, it is my hope within the next couple of meetings that we'll definitely be able to publicly come out and, and talk about what the plan will be. Because, as was mentioned, we're very happy that the top two floors are done. And the reason why we've kind of stalled it at that point is we want to make sure whatever plan going forward is going to be the most effective one, to make sure that the water that's infiltrating into the basement is dealt with. You know, we knew right from the beginning that there was water, and I think we've talked about this, Matt, that, you know, all the engineers came forward with some remediation plans, which unfortunately just didn't work. So, now we're going to go back and make sure we can come up with something that we hope will work.
Fair enough. So, and then regardless, should be forthcoming, like if you reset this?
That would be the hope, yes. Because we want to make sure we have it resolved so we can continue on, right?
Oh.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
I just had a question about the carbon tax review.
Yes.
Just how you guys decided on the two, what was it?
The letter that we were sending to the province?
Yeah. You suggested two things to the minister of where the money should be allocated, just how you, how that came about, and if anything else was on the table, like your view about anything else.
Sure. Well, we, our consultants, which is the Pembina Institute, we met with them a couple of weeks ago, and actually had a great afternoon session with council where we just had that discussion. And a lot of the information that went around the table from councilors' points of view is that if there's going to be a carbon tax, we want to identify where that money was going and was it being effectively used. Now, I think as was mentioned earlier today, the province does not have any plans to go further at this point, and that's why they're just reaching out to communities, saying, you know, what do you like or not like about the carbon tax? Do you see it going forward or being abolished or going up? And I mean, right now, there's a broad spectrum that the province is hearing, so the city just wanted to, as being, basically recognized as one of the leading municipalities in B.C., we want to ensure that we had a letter going forward, just kind of recognizing that the carbon tax is there and what our kind of high-level thoughts were at this time.
And why did you feel it was appropriate to hire a consultant to get your opinion about the carbon tax?
Well, we have an ongoing relationship with the Pembina Institutes. For those who have been around for a while, we used to actually do a lot of that in-house when Manuel Machado was here. When Manny left the city of Dawson Creek, instead of replacing his position, some of his duties were spread around, and Jim can possibly correct me or add to this comment. But then, we also, at that time, council agreed that we already had a contract relationship with Pembina, and that we would just have to lean on them a little bit more. It's always important, you know, from a council perspective, that we really reach out to people who have a lot of background and expertise on different issues to help facilitate the discussion before we get to a decision. Anything else at this time, then? Nobody else is still crying after Bud got his Queen's Jubilee?
You sure surprised him, didn't you?
That was awesome.
So, on that, then, thank you, everybody. So, a motion to recess to the close. So, Counselor Schuman, Counselor Malkinson, all those in favor, opposed, and it's carried. We'll take five minutes, and thanks for a great, informative, and good meeting.